All righty, this is all that's made in order. Please rise to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Any citizens are to be heard. Hearing none, consideration of possible action on approving amendments.
Motion. Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Five, consideration of possible action on approving certificate assistance agreement between Logan County and Oklahoma.
Who is it?
That's mine. For westbound right turn lane on Waterloo Road at Center Road intersection, their ADA had an issue with that and would not sign off on it, so we're in limbo, I'd say.
So we're no action?
We're no action. What was the issue with their ADA?
Yeah, it's their.
Uh, right. They say that they receive Oklahoma taxes. All that right turn lane is in Logan County and that would be spending their tax money.
Right turn lane, that would be going west, right?
It's westbound, on the north side of the road.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, I think they're still looking at it. We'll see what happens.
I'll just know.
I don't think Ray wants to go against his DO.
I don't blame you for that.
Gretchen.
Normally those are the ones that keep you out of trouble, you don't want them.
I know, but it wasn't to put you in jail. So no action, what do you say?
All righty, no action.
No action.
Six, consideration of possible action on approving verification of new county roads to OD. I'm assuming you updated the map?
Yeah.
Somebody?
We sent it off to them and this is what they need in order to verify that. I've got almost 30 miles on this, we found another mile, we may have some more. But in the meantime, yeah, I've got about 30 more miles now in the district that they weren't...
So these roads, are they section line roads or?
Uh, most all of, these 20, 30, 30 miles of roads are mostly addition, yes sir.
So they're not section line roads?
No, they're not section line roads. They're roads that we have been maintaining, some of them for many, many years. Some of them that we've accepted through this board. Now that's, uh, what, not quite, what, about .75% of our total, so, yeah, it's something. Adds to my inventory, if you will. So we have inventory roads.
I looked at ours at Matthews Center, thanks by the way.
Yeah, that was pretty good. And before, when I'd gotten something like that, all I got was this big spreadsheet with all these numbers all over the place, I didn't get it where, I don't think Global Earth was here then or something, anyhow, might have been brand new, but I didn't have that technology at the time, so anyhow, I appreciate you getting that to us.
I didn't see any real updates on our district, one side, not a bunch anyway.
But yeah, we maintain all those roads and we have for, some of them for 30, 40 years that we've maintained.
So, and did he accept them?
Yeah.
The county?
Yeah, he accepted, now he needs that verified through us.
Now, did the county accept all these roads for maintenance?
Yes.
You got resolutions to back them all up?
Yes. Well, I do, except for those that we've been maintaining for 30, 40 years. You know? We've had a few of those.
And then?
Yeah. I don't know how you want to do this, if we're if we're sure that we've got a resolution, that's one thing, but I don't know.
I don't know if it's worth arguing over.
So is that a second?
I didn't say that either.
Well, if you're sure, man.
I'm sure about it.
I'll second then. All in favor?
I'm a little bit shocked with it.
Aye.
Did you sign that yet?
No. I haven't voted yet, thinking. It done passed, I mean, both y'all voted aye. I'll vote aye. But that's my whole issue, is now we got 30 more miles, that's going to take many off the section line roads.
Thirty miles, we've already putting a blade down every once in a while.
Yeah, we should.
Occasionally taking them to jail, whatever. It's also roads that we'll get, get on
Seventeen dollars.
On the county coffers. Got to lift our overall income for all three districts.
How does that work? How much does that increase, what we get? I mean, that's county highway funds we're talking about, right?
Right.
So, what's the number of road miles?
I mean, excuse me, but we've got quite a few road miles and I don't think we get as much county highway funds as Payne County, who's got a whole bunch less road miles than we do.
But their population is their offset.
I understand, okay, so that's kind of my point. So road miles isn't the big determining factor, right?
It's a formula that takes in.
Right. But it's not, it's not the big
It's not the big factor. You're not going to get no more money.
Right.
I think Shannon told me that one day it's like seventeen dollars for, he had like a 3/16 of a mile or something.
Right.
Seventeen dollars didn't go too far. All right, so we voted on that, carried by that rock.
If you go get it.
Yeah. Let the wind blow your truck in.
Here it did.
Here, that's, that's not. Seven, consideration of possible action on approving resolution lowering the speed limit from 45 mile an hour to 35 mile an hour on Pennsylvania between State Highway 74 and County Route 72.
Does Sheriff can set up a speed trap after?
Yeah, he will say so.
Oh.
Big government.
I'll move that we approve.
Is that quick that way?
I know, he's on the ball. Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Eight, consideration of possible action on approving the following resolution disposing of equipment for District Two. I'll move that we approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nine, consideration of possible action on approving cooperative agreement. Cooperative agreement extension service, with extension service.
Okay, so now that the budget is totally approved and has been dispersed, this is the contract with OSU for the Extension Office based on what was dispersed to them through the budget.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second. So this is, is this also approving their budget? Is that what we're looking at?
We've already approved their budget.
With $68,381?
Yes, that went through our budget process. And then this is the contract that just backs that up. They don't do the contract till the budget has been guaranteed and dispersed.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? All those in favor, I move that we approve. Did I already do that?
Already did that, yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
I'm just trying to help you out, but.
Good, just take over.
No.
Ten, consideration of possible action on approving certificate for Red Dirt Wind Project. What's this about, Troy?
All right, the, they had put through and approved a couple of road crossing permits for this wind project earlier this year. And in part of getting their financing all laid out for their construction, they needed this certificate that says they got the permits that were required by the county, which was just two road crossing permits. When they called me about this, they sent the form, asked that I send it to Lowell to be looked at and approved, and Lowell has done that. He made one slight change, which was to point out that you guys are saying their permits were done as of this date. Was the only change that Lowell had, he had no other issues with it.
What's this certificate for again?
It's just stating that Richter got the permits that were needed from Logan County and it's part of their putting together their financing package for their wind project. And it just states that the only licensing or requirement that Logan County had was road crossing permits, and they obtained two of them.
Oh, okay, okay. I was wondering, what in the world did we?
Yeah, yeah, no, if.
All right, that makes sense then, thank you ma'am. Appreciate it.
I move we approve.
Gretchen.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Eleven, consideration of possible action on approving commercial service agreement with Cox Business, we're in that service.
This is for my office. We are on the same internet speeds that were originally put in in 2002. Calpro is doing a major upgrade and actually changing the platform of our software to a cloud-based, and we are going to be one of their beta counties. It's going to launch in my office on the 18th of December, but because of that, I need to get a little better internet service put in. So, that's what this is. I'm also having to purchase or add additional email boxes over what comes with the account, so it's going to, this is all out of my budget money for this, but because it's an agreement, I have to bring it to the board.
Yes ma'am, I think you probably need the higher speed, especially for cloud services. However, just a brief comment. Do you know why they sent a chimpanzee into space first?
Oh, I understand.
Okay.
I understand, and just
You've been the test pilot there for them.
And I will tell you, they've launched in two smaller counties. And we're going to run a double system.
Sweet, okay, that's what I was wanting to hear, thank you ma'am.
So, yeah, I won't, yeah, I opted for the double system, till we're sure. But it's going to be really, what little bit I've seen of it already, it's going to be really nice.
I love those movies, you bet.
Hmm? I stream over there now with my minimal, I just
Here, you make a motion on that.
I just
I'll move. All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Anything on 12 and 13?
Yes.
Twelve, consideration of possible action on resolution appointing Richter was issuing officers for various occasions.
I have one for Oak Cliff Fire Department, who has a new fire chief, his name is Blake Hudson Pillar.
Nice guy.
And I also have the Health Department.
Health Department's nice and health oriented. Jeez Louise.
I'll move we approve.
Second.
I have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Thirteen, consideration of possible action on resolution appointing receiving officers.
Also for the Health Department in Oak Cliff Fire.
Damon, well, I'm waiting for them to get down here, I just wanted to take the time to thank you for sending the deputy out on Waterloo Road while we were doing those, while that mail was out there. There are people that are just acting a fool out there.
That's really crazy out there.
Running over their safety cones, the action safety put out and all that stuff. But once, I tell you what, once your deputy got out there, everything, everybody calmed down.
Changed attitude a little bit?
Yeah, after about four tickets, they quit. Quit that silliness out there.
Did you get the civilians, did you? All right. Didn't know what you think about it.
We had enough trucks where if we had any more out there, we'd have been backing up traffic.
There you go.
We didn't have to wait, they didn't have to wait on us, we had just enough trucks to get it done.
Would be a motion.
I move.
Second.
Monty actually hadn't made a motion, so somebody would like to take the second.
Second.
I just don't matter.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fourteen, consideration of possible action on approving following permanent road crossing permits.
Hot start of your trolling. Or gradient.
All right, reminding everybody, December 5th at the Fairgrounds, we're going to do that health screening deal, if you want to send your employees down here from 12 to 3.
What is it again?
It's the health screening deal that they provide over here on our insurance. Free blood work, so only thing they need is an insurance card and it don't have to be
12 to 3?
It don't have to be our insurance either. So if any of the school employees or city employees want to go, they're more than welcome.
For county, public, women?
I think it's anybody.
Well, I think it's probably public employees.
Yeah.
Before you throw that out there, you might want to verify that.
Yeah. But if you already had that done, you should probably use your device and get paid for it.
They don't pay for it anyway, anymore, the insurance quit dead.
Health Choice stopped the cash benefit for doing it, so, but you can still get the annual physical thing.
We had that done at our place three, four months ago, so our online employees probably couldn't go back yet.
Right.
You got a motion on this?
No, I do not.
I'll move we approve.
Second.
Have a motion in the second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen, hold 300 bucks. Consideration of possible action on consent from Geniuses.
Hang on. Transfers.
Oh Damon, the other thing I noticed is that your deputy was sporting one of those new logos on the side of that vehicle. I like that a lot.
Yeah, it's unclaimable.
Yeah.
Trying to hide the logo. Those look a lot like cars. Just public effects, all that's there. Oh yeah. Really come like a purdy. All sorts of stuff.
Thank you.
Normally purdy is equated with more money though, right? Always is.
Yeah. I'm going. I'll save my phone, until I have to kill.
Troy, was he going in the cloud, does that help you like backup, write paper, work from alternate locations?
That would be an option, I'm not going to open that option as far as multiple locations. I already have where I can, but what it is, is they've completely redesigned the software they're going to use, and the new software, not only is it being built on the cloud, but this new design is going to be extremely helpful, it's much more customizable for us in how we can lay things out and search and some stuff like that. It's the first complete platform overhaul they've done since, I think '06. So.
It's a really good option for disaster recovery too, because all your data is off-site already.
Well, and I off-site backup
Right, right.
Now, so.
But now, I mean, they're responsible for the backups and that sort of stuff.
I will have bought my last server for that side of the office. This is just on the financial side, they haven't redone the land side, but I won't have to buy any more new servers for the purchasing side, and since I just bought one earlier this year.
Be good.
Calpro is really good about customizing and designing and so the feedback would be enabled to get in at the start and ask, you know, fix this, change that, lay this out. It's good. But we are going to, we're going to maintain our current for a couple of months.
Yeah.
Stay away from the foggy clouds.
When you consider how minimal internet we've had over there and the load that we've put on it, I mean, I gotta say, it's been okay. I just know that after this period of time, it was time to
Yeah.
To to get it a whole lot better and replace the modem and, you know, get all that fresh start, you know how that works?
I know, all about uploading downloads, definitely. Mostly uploads.
If they want to sell you a really high download speed and not
Oh yeah, yeah. Yeah, they sell it because you can download your Netflix and all that stuff faster, all your movies faster.
That buffering is horrible. And when you rely on streaming for television
That's true, so I careless on my download.
I dropped cable and went to stream only.
Yeah.
You get used to watching it real slow.
No, actually, I can't, I can't complain too much, it fits really well for me at home. Saved me a whole lot of money over cable.
I do the same. About a hundred bucks a month.
Well, I got in, when DirecTV launched their Now service, which is exactly one year ago, this is Collection Board, which Monty signs, and then alcohol beverage. They grandfathered those that signed up for the first 90 days or whatever. And so what their package that they have available now, which they have added continuously to, is like 80 bucks a month or whatever, and I'm grandfathered at 35. And I've been really happy with it. They've added, because it started without locals, I just put in the antenna, that wouldn't be, but now they've added ABC, CBS, and Fox locals. And several other things they've added in last year. I've been, I said, and I can use it on any device.
So what do you do if there's a big football game like on ESPN?
I have it.
You have ESPN?
I have like 80 channels. When I first signed up, I did not have Fox Southwest, I did for Dallas, but not here. Well, they added that, so I get Thunder games, there's not much, you can, they do HBO and Showtime, which is an additional, but is like eight bucks a month or whatever. And with Netflix, Amazon, I've got more than I need.
I got most of those too. I didn't want to miss my sports channels, that's mine.
Always people in Guthrie drink a lot of alcohol.
Second. Can't drink the water.
Well, that's Good point.
I move we approve.
Second.
We got a motion in the second, all in favor?
He's on the roll today.
Yeah? Feel bad, can't help it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Second.
Sixteen, consideration of possible action on approving claims to payment from November 2017. Dang, 20 weeks don't have a record, my man.
You got somebody new over there?
I think they haven't changed or they're trying to get organized.
I move we approve, second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Seventeen, any citizen desire to be heard? Hearing none. Eighteen, comments, announcements, questions by the board?
Out.
I got one. I gave some information to Troy this morning on state contract bid price for Mini Track Hoop. And what we're looking at is a John Deere 60G or equivalent with a CAD, it's one of the little rubber track hoes, it's got a 24-inch bucket, and also you can get that 48, it's not a real deep 48-inch, but one for cleaning ditches and that kind of stuff. And that would come in really handy. We just paid off our backhoe, our CAT, our backhoe, so we completely on that, not making payments on that anymore. And I guess it's kind of like when you get a car paid for, you feel like you're going to buy something else, but that little trackhoe would really be handy for us on digouts, for repairing streets, for, I mean, just about everything. And looking at asking the board to bring that to, we're going to bring that to the trust and ask for that. It's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 to 65,000 dollars for a new one. That's all I have.
You anything?
All now, seriously, I got those trackers going across little bridges and whatnot, just Oh, no, seriously, I got those tractors going across little bridges and whatnot, just dirt roads, trying to get around I-35 and such, so I call away from measures. I seem to think it would really help if Logan County had its own weights and measures officer. So, he sent me some details on that.
We're not on that.
Are you? Alright, well, I'll share it this week, you too. Alright.
Can, can you also take over for writing tickets to the, to our truck drivers for having dirt on the back of their?
Absolutely.
From the, okay, from the OHP, can we?
Well, we can share it.
I'd like to claim, I'd like for you to claim responsibility for those actions. But that's just me.
It's my responsibility.
I know. But you're that kind of guy.
We can handle it.
Thank you, sir. Is that it?
That's it.
Nineteen, the tournament.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.